All right, good evening. It is now 5:30 PM and I call this Governing Board Work Session to Order. All Board members are present with the exception of Mr. Conroy. And representing the district is going to be Interim Superintendent Terry Romo, Michelle Wambach, and Crystal Wambach. And if you would please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, next item on the agenda would be adoption of the agenda.
I move that we adopt the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero. Next item would be interim Superintendent Terry Romo's quarterly report.
So I want to thank all of us, make sure that's on. Thank you all very much for just the opportunity just to touch base with you. And you know, whenever you sit down and you kind of write like an entry plan or an action plan and you say, you know, thirty to ninety days, here's where I'm going to be, you always go, hmm, will I get there? It gives you kind of where should you start, what should you focus on? But I'm going to kind of go through with you all because I kind of like I laid out all the things that I've been working on and I just said, you know, I'm just going to stick to the things that were on the entry plan pretty much for the most part. There's other things that have been going on, but I feel like to not keep you here too, too long. But just to give you a good summary of the things I had said I'd be working on, this would be a good place to start. So all that I've been doing when I even set out to write my entry plan for you all and I said, yes, I would consider doing this as an interim. I take into consideration every one of the areas on this collective commitments. I think it's really, really important that, yes, we want to stay focused on our student achievement, but it's going to take all of those things from that inner circle that you as a governing board put together to really help us get there and the orange that our schools have said, yes, this is what we will take on and support. So how it was broken out in the action plan that I, or entry plan that I had shared with you all was listening and learning in three phases. So I'm going to be summarizing phase one for you, which is supposed to be the first sixty to ninety days. We're on like day seventy-seven of this actual plan, so right there. The first part was that I had told you guys I was going to work on was listening tours. Was really starting to key in and to focus in on what people within this district are sharing and learning from that. And so I'm going to have him click on it for me. This is just, oops, now go back for me if you could. You can click on that link under Governing Board. There you go. Go right down, oops. It's up there. You can just click on it. You don't like.
Yeah, it would, sorry.
You're like, it doesn't want to do that. I'm not going to go through all of this with you because I did this at a governing board meeting. But if you would just forward just a couple of slides in, this one right here is perfect. I just wanted to touch base again, but these were the priorities that came through as themes from the conversations I had with each of you. So just the documents and things I got from you all. So if any time that there's something else you want added to that, or something else you want added to that, or focus in on more, I would love to hear that feedback from you as a board. We'll go ahead and we'll go out of this one. And the next one is cabinet leaders. I've done them, the principals and association leadership. And so click on it for me on this one. This one I did more just of a summary, but if actually, if you'll kind of scroll down, I asked them multiple questions, not the exact same ones I asked you all. If you go all the way to the bottom of it, actually, because it's my key findings, right here, the key takeaways. So from the twelve areas that I asked them for, I think you'll notice some things that are similar to your, what you all had said, or things that would definitely at least fall under what you as a board had said. Instructional excellence. They know that there needs to be a focus on rigorous tier-one instruction, which would be again, tier-one is what all of our kiddos get. It's that, you know, the math lesson that everybody receives in the classroom, that first best instruction. But they feel like it needs to be maybe a little bit more rigorous than what we're currently offering kiddos. Sometimes we're not taking it to the right level, or we teach a little bit to the lower group and they were missing some of our higher-end kids. Literacy was a key one. I know that came forward from a lot of you as board members, especially like that third grade reading being so super important. Writing and just equity for all learners, regardless of what title you have or anything like that, whether you're special education or you're gifted, we need to be able to meet the needs of all kiddos. So that came through from our leaders. Professional growth was an area that they felt like was still super important. Our work on professional learning communities is something I heard from the leaders time and time again that they want to see. Targeted strategies on how to help kids move forward, how to improve those reading scores, how to deal with behaviors, specific strategies that they can help support their teachers with right away. And then advanced opportunities for staff, things like those enrichment opportunities of maybe teachers becoming nationally board certified, which that is something that we've been working on. We have some leaders within our district, Mary Perez, Principal of Machuca Mountain, is leading that process. We have some teachers who are also nationally board certified. And it's just kind of newer to this side of education. That is just a certification that if a teacher takes the time, it's a very rigorous coursework, if they take that, they are then certified to teach in any state in the country. So instead of going to a state and having to go through their routines, they would be able to teach anywhere. So those are things that they came up with. Retention and recruitment, pay, we have to address our pay issue. The turnover that we have, which majority of comes from because of our lack of pay. We do have some rural challenges, getting people to come to Southern Arizona. I think once they're here, they don't want to leave. I'm one of those people. I would, I always thought I'm going to grow up and move away and I've just been here ever since, I love it. So, but those are things that came through from our leaders and making sure that we're supporting the relationships and helping people who do choose to move here to feel connected to this community is super important. Having that positive culture, focusing in on our kiddos, having engaged schools who are communicating with our families, they recognize that as something to focus in on. They know that we need some stronger systems to be put into place. Clear communication, we know communication always continues to go, to be something that we talk about and it's definitely something that my department and all of the people in, on my team are really working on. That they hear a lot of times from their teachers that they're really overloaded, they feel very overwhelmed. So that is something that we are listening to, to be able to work with them. And having a unified message, that if there's something that is coming out from the district level, that we assist them with the messaging of that, so that it doesn't, you know, you work at this school and you hear this message and you work at this school and you hear it differently. If it's something that's the same for everybody, they would like it to be generated from the district level and go out, okay? You can take us back. Paul, thank you so much. Okay, so then I have now, just so you kind of know what the other groups on there, meetings are now set up for every school. I did the first one yesterday. I'm calling up my listening tours again. I did Machuca Mountain yesterday, but every school is set up to have a listening tour and I'll be sharing the results of those as we get them all typed up. It just happened yesterday afternoon was the first one. I also have requested time to meet with our JCMS and Buena student groups, just to be able to meet with them and kind of get a student perspective as well. And then I also will be holding meetings with community leaders and partners in October. I already have a meeting with some city leaders actually next week to basically go through this process as well. So all of those are still in place and I'm still within my ninety days and I will, I'll make sure that everybody is done in regards to the listening tours and I'll share all of that information with you all to include the trends that kind of shine through from all of those groups as well. So it went really well. I was excited about Machuca Mountain yesterday. They were very positive, consolidations on everybody's mind, but I got to have some just open good conversations with them and I feel like it went really well and I hope that they felt listened and heard, so. So the next area on my phase one plan was to review key data and documents. So one of the things that I had listed on there was a strategic plan. It's definitely a work in progress. One of the things is we don't have a formalized, in our district, a formalized strategic action plan. So that's something that I have been working on, but as anybody who's ever done a strategic action plan knows, you can kind of put together a framework, but it has to be built by the people who are doing the work. And so that's kind of the next part of what will be happening. But if you can click on that link for me. This is just, again, it says it's a draft because that's exactly where we're at and I'm not going to go through all of this, but you'll have access to the links. But if you can kind of go ahead and forward. Oh, actually, can't I? Same idea, I already talked about this one. But the core priorities that are really kind of shining through from, as of this point, from our principals and from the conversations with you all, I mean even from the teachers that I spoke with yesterday, core priorities are still showing up as student achievement, community engagement, and fiscal responsibility. Those came through for them as well. And we really, that concept of we want to be the choice for people. I have said to lots of people, whether it's that their kids are being homeschooled or they're attending another charter school, I just want kids in school. I want kids being educated by certified teachers. That's really my goal. But I want to be able to show, because there's some amazing things that are taking place within this school district and it's up to us to tell our story. And if we tell our story and we get that news out there enough, I believe that we really will be that district of choice for our families. So priority one with student achievement within this, and so I've just kind of broken down again, I'm not going to read it to you because again, it is just a draft, but just to, so you can see kind of some of the things that I'm thinking, kind of working on and I'm going to then get our principals involved and teacher leaders involved to kind of look at it. But with strategies, measures of success, again, I don't expect you to read it. Community engagement, we'll have strategies and some measures of success. Fiscal responsibility, also strategies, measures of success, you know, things like that. Balanced budget and not being so reliant on just like one-time funds, like grant funds that we get just one time. Making sure that we have additional reserved funds in our account, things like that. So those are just some of the things. I have a timeline that's sort of, just to kind of guide us for the things for this year, year two, and sustaining and innovating. So which would be year three. So it would be a three-year strategic plan based off the things that I've just been sharing with you. And then would be, the accountability reporting would be kind of adding a quarterly progress report to the governing board and to the community about where we're at with each of those things. I'm going to show you on the other one, a strategic plan scorecard with some indicators. And then there would be obviously superintendent's end of year report about those top three priorities. You can go ahead and exit me out of this. And then this would just kind of give you a little sample. I know it's sort of, oops, go back one, oops, did I do that? One of us did. This would be an example of a scorecard. I took out the target because these aren't ours and the status, I didn't want to confuse anybody with that, that those were what ours were. But this is just an example of a scorecard, which would be, these are the things that we're going to work on, what is our objective in doing that? And then this is how we would measure it, where are we trying to get to? And then where are we at? Green, obviously, good to go. Yellow would be, that's the area to work on. Red would be, we need to stop, timeout, and to fix it. So again, that's kind of the concept that will be happening will be a strategic plan for three years with basically some measurements so that we can actually report specifically to you. Some other things that I've been doing, again, I have weekly audit update meetings, but we got all of our information submitted. We were so excited. We, you all probably got an email. I have a letter that I need to send them and I'll get that to them by Friday, but everything else is in. And I'm proud to say of all those items, I think it was, we had twenty-six of them that we were able to mark as implemented from that audit and only four that were still work in progress. So I feel like we've really come a long way on that work and I'm very, very proud of what we've gotten accomplished so far. Academic and behavioral trends, looking at those on a regular basis. I had curriculum folks over the other day talking me through the new assessment system that we're using because Galileo was kind of fading out from what we could be able to use. So we have a new assessment system. So I got to see all those charts and see how everybody's doing at the beginning of the year, when we had that midterm about, kind of to be able to see like now that teachers have had the kids and they've been teaching them, how are they doing? We'll be sharing that. I look at behavior trends on a regular basis through our Edge of Climate program to see how many referrals we're having, where they're happening at. I'll reach out to principals if I notice like something like, one of my schools a couple of weeks ago was like having a high number of kindergarten referrals. So I reached out and said, do you need some support or what's, you know, what's going on? But more, a lot of really discipline is about teaching, right? And so it's really about teaching those kiddos what's appropriate behaviors at school, making sure that their families are aware of it. So that made perfect sense to me. Budget and staffing, we are looking at and working all the time. We had a meeting today regarding staffing. And grant funding, status and the impact, definitely keeping an eye, both Ms. Wambach and I are keeping an eye on the Title I and Title II cuts that are anticipated to come out officially on October 1. And so we're waiting on that and being very conservative with how we're spending, ensuring that things are in place. And so I'm really blessed with a full team working through those items. And then the next one, I had said that I'd be walking campuses. And so I know I have two pictures here for you. This would be me with a lovely big term. This would be my senior portrait and that's my newest picture from this year. But I just like to remind everyone that this is my home, this is my community. I truly grew up here. I'm a product of the school district. And so this has been part of the thing I have just loved so, so much. So Terry's Tuesday visits, I go out tonight because it's schools. I know Ms. Rochford joined me this Tuesday. We went over and visited at Carmichael and walked through classrooms. We're doing it different this year, instead of whole groups going together, all of us from the cabinet level, we all kind of split up on Tuesday mornings and go to different schools. So more schools are getting visited. And then when we meet as leaders on Monday afternoons, when we have our leadership team meeting, we talk about what are we seeing out in the site schools? Which schools did you go to this week? Just ensuring that we're all going and we're visiting different schools. I kind of have a little structure to go through to be able to visit all of them. I leave little notes for our teachers. Another one is maintenance walkthrough. That's one of the things that sometimes our principals are saying, hey, not all my work orders are getting completed on a timely basis, that sort of thing. So I set up with Mr. Sampson, our maintenance director, and we printed off for every school their maintenance requests since the beginning of school. And we are going and we are walking the school with the principal, maybe sometimes it's principal and principal secretary because they're the ones who usually enter them. We've gone through most all the schools. We have a couple more. That way he can tell me about any projects that are up for schools' facility board to be able to be working on. We have some structural engineers coming in, some things like that that are going on, some carpet replacements. We were able to talk about those, but also just talk about just general maintenance and how things are going and just giving the principals a chance to say, oh, you know what, I haven't put it in yet, but this is an issue for us. I just feel like that's a positive, just that they feel like they're heard and so that also he gets a chance to be able like face-to-face to talk with them. And it's been really actually a pleasure to hear how pleased our principals have been with the response from maintenance this year. They have just been really pleased. I heard that pretty much at every school site that I went to, so that's exciting. And then attending district events has really been super fun. I've always loved going to events, but this year's been extra special actually. And so I decided, I'm just going to tell that one with words, or not with words, but with pictures. I decided it was really important to start the year, these lovely ladies here, they all are ladies, they're at the front of every one of our schools. And we're really working on customer service this year and how we treat our community. And it's an area of focus for us. We actually have our second day of a training that's specifically for our front office staff on October 3rd, I believe it is. But I took all of them flowers that first day, district did not buy them, but just to say thank you and just to say thanks for being the front of our schools and remember that we pay attention to you as well. These are pictures just from our first day back and just kind of the mantra that I keep kind of saying is you matter because it's the people here that make a difference. Like when I talk to you about the consolidation, I love every one of these buildings, but it's really not the buildings that I love, it's not the schools that I love, it is the people that's in those buildings. That's what makes it special. Some of these are just some of our fun ones, either from our retreat this summer or when I went to Jackie Clay's Round Table and some of our students were speaking, some of our Buena students, that's Ms. Jimenez's daughter actually speaking, and that's Ms. Young's son actually, they were both speaking. They're on a council for her. And then this is the one, our town and country student who was hit on the way to school and that's the police coming together with her principal and giving her a bicycle that she earned. I go into schools and I'm seeing, this was actually taken just yesterday when Ms. Rochford and I were there, that they're tracking their attendance. I know it's kind of hard to read them, but they're tracking by grade level and celebrating where they're at with their attendance because we know if we really want to teach them and do well, we've got to have them there. This I thought was fabulous and this also happened yesterday. Before Ms. Jimenez could go on the walk with us, she had five little second graders who had been selected by their teacher to come in. And every day she does this with a different group of kids and they help lead the pledge and a lot of our schools, and they do the pledge and they do their PBIS expectations. They even did a wheel of names for the teachers who had given their ten points and it went around and it recognized and the kids are like, oh, please let it be my teacher. They were just excited for, you know, for them as well. So that's been wonderful. This was, a lot of this is from Buena's homecoming events or the band. Some of these I get to attend, it's kind of a win-win because it's my own kiddo, but also just to see, like these are teachers playing Tug of War at the cup rally and I just felt like it really kind of summarized, I think, what a lot of people are doing this year. They're coming together, they're really working and pulling together in the same direction. And so we've got a pretty awesome place to work here that we are going to continue to work on and to get better. So again, there's those themes again, student achievement. Our goal is to obviously have increases in all three of these areas, student achievement, community engagement, fiscal responsibility. So those are all our themes and emergent areas of focus. I had said that I would share with you quick wins. So we have started a district newsletter and that is for our families and it's also posted on our website as well as for our staff. And we're also kind of sending out, you know, like I just had a lot of pictures this last week, so I just sent an email to everybody just thanking them for the work that they're doing, sending some pictures, ask them to send me some pictures to share and they're doing that. I've started a weekly communication with all our principals and department leads. I just call out my Monday memo from the interim superintendent. I share my updates, my weekly schedule, any areas of focus, links to things that I think need to be, you know, like beginning of the year, you're doing site council and if you're new here, how do I find that? So a link to the policy on site council, things like that, just to help them remember. A lot of time obviously has been put into the school consolidation process. And so, and I'm also trying to use video more because sometimes how you read something that you receive is how you are personally feeling at the moment. So if you're not real happy about this, that's how maybe you would take it. So I'm going to ask if you could click please on the school consolidation link, so I want to show all of you just so you can kind of, don't push play yet, but just on our district website and actually any of our district webpage, school pages, if you can go up a little bit for me, sorry. School consolidation is now a link on that page. And so this is now kind of the hub of where information will be at for any family that wants to look up information about the consolidation. So again, it's our go-to place. This is just, oops, there's a typo and we'll fix that, summary. So of the teaching and learning, school culture and values, traditions, community events, these are things that kind of came out. Communication and relationships, facilities and environment, concerns and emotional impact and hopes for the future. And I wanted to show you, if you just click on that for me. We're giving them, because it doesn't, it was all anonymous, but you can actually, so families can go in and they can look at the hard data instead of just thinking, well, that's not what I said and what I said was da-da-da. So you can see how people voted on each of the different areas and then if you go to the end, I'm sorry, go back one, then there's responses, okay? So sometimes you will see things like, you know, please don't lose this teacher or don't. So I tried to take any of the information that I received from this survey and use that in my, my little email. So if you can, or my video, sorry. If you can take us back to the video, it's only two minutes. I am going to go ahead and let you see it just so.
Hello, SVUSD families. I want to begin by sincerely thanking you for taking the time to complete our school consolidation survey. Could you turn that up? Over four hundred of you took this survey.
You want to stop it for a second, let me see.
I think, can you turn it up louder there? Okay. And we deeply value the ideas, hopes, and concerns you shared with us. One of the strongest messages we heard is that great teachers and staff make all the difference. Families want their children to learn from caring, consistent educators in small class sizes where every child is known and supported. We want to assure you that class size policies will remain in effect and that students will continue to have access to gifted programming, STEM programs, arts, clubs, special programs that enrich their learning. You also told us how much safety, respect, and belonging matter. Families want schools where children feel secure, supported, and celebrated. We are committed to maintaining strong PBIS programs, fairness, and student-centered values at the heart of every decision we make. We also heard how important traditions and community events are, things like book fairs and carnivals and pajama days that happen during spirit weeks and family-centered activities. These transitions build pride and belonging and we are determined to carry them forward into the future. Communication and partnership with families remain essential. We know this transition is emotional. That's why we promise to be transparent and consistent, keeping students with their teachers and familiar staff whenever possible. Just as an example, like if school A closes, those K through five students and their staff will move all together to school B. We also know that bus routes will need to be adjusted and that facilities must remain safe, welcoming, and well-kept. Parents voice concerns about age-appropriate placements and that family feel of our schools. We are committed to protecting that sense of community while making sure campuses are secure and even vibrant. Yes, there's real grief and concern about losing school identities, but there's also hope. Many of you shared the belief that together we can honor our traditions while creating new opportunities, expanding those extracurriculars, our music, art, even leadership programs that can help our students thrive. We are only able to make these changes because our schools are currently underutilized. By coming together, we can balance resources and ensure every child has access to excellent teaching, strong programs, and a safe, welcoming environment. Again, please rest assured that we will not be changing our class size policies based on this. Thank you again for your input, your partnership, and for trusting us with your children. Together, we will make this transition in a way that preserves what you value most, great teachers, strong community, and opportunities for every student to succeed. Have a wonderful day.
So I wanted again to share that, yes, this is worth, it's been done, but more just so that you can help share this news, that this is available to our families now. It gives you some, the timeline that's happening, that yes, I will make the recommendation here, but no vote will be happening at that meeting and that there will be a town hall meeting that is held ten days prior to any votes that even can take place. And I've actually been working with a facilitator, actually one of the ones that Ms. Robinson and I saw at the law conference. He's going to work with us to facilitate that town hall meeting where we can all come together, so.
Can I just point out a quick, I think the date of that meeting needs to be, I believe, October 7th.
I agree. I think you're right.
So fix that one too.
Yes. We did a summary. Okay, yes, we will do that, thank you. Can you write that down for me?
Yeah, fix that.
Thank you so much. And then interim superintendent, if you can go back to my presentation. There we go. And then my last thing is that the schools, school board receives weekly updates now that I've started that and a lot of you mentioned that and thanked me for sending those and so I will continue to do that as well. So I think, I think that's the last thing that I had on my, oh, actually, this is, sorry, just kidding. Next step, phase two, these are the things, the objectives, actions, and deliverables that I said would be happening next on just end line in general, not about the consolidation of schools, but just for the rest of the school year. But I just thought there was a couple of things I just would point out in regards to this pipeline to leadership. This is something that we've worked a lot on and our, over when I was back in curriculum and continues, that work continues on. But our focus on teacher-team leaders, we have teams, teacher-team leaders at every one of our schools. So it's important that we continue to support them because anybody from any position and anywhere can be a leader. You don't have to be. You don't have to be in administration. You don't have to get up to the district office. Wherever you're at, you can choose to lead. So, but we have, uh, team leaders. We also have instructional coaches. That's kind of the next way, kind of as a pipeline to have us, um, find, be able to have more, um, leadership opportunities within our district, assistant principals and principals. Um, there's obviously lots of other options, but I just wanted to kind of share that one. Um, and so that's what's happened in phase two. Now that's the end, okay? So any, um, questions for me or things you'd like me to think about? Um, I, I've had some good conversations, uh, with several of you and, um, I truly feel like I am where I'm supposed to be right now. I am doing the work that I'm supposed to do. And I just want to thank you as a board, um, for your support, your trust in me to do this important work. Um, this is not something I ever saw myself doing, but I just, I truly, I was speaking this morning at the, um, they had the prayer at the flagpole this morning up at Buena. And I was talking to one of the, the parents that was there and I just said, you know, I just actually feel rather calm, um, about it all. And I just think that's just, it's a sign of being at peace with things and, um, so. But I, I'm open to ideas and suggestions. I, that's what I tell everybody, like, when I go to that listening tour, like, tell me what it is, um, what sort of things do you feel like we really need to work on? Because I am listening and we want it to be the best thing possible. Is everything perfect? No. Do I do lots of after actions about things? Yes. Um, but that's just part of learning and growing. So I'll turn it over to you guys.
I just want to make a comment. I was very impressed on Tuesday when I went with you, um, to a school and the atmosphere just seemed so different to me. Um, not, it wasn't just the painting on the wall and all the upkeep of the maintenance, but when I went into some of the classrooms, the, the teachers took time to address some of my questions. Um, I saw, I was very encouraged by what I saw, but I think that's one of the things, this kind of communication that you're bringing forth is so essential. Um, and I saw personally, um, that some of the teachers were so grateful to hear a positive comment. Or you were observing them, or I had so much fun looking around the room and looking at their signs and some of their comments. And a lot of words that would build people up, not tear them down. Um, and I asked one of the teachers, I, while I was waiting for you to come, um, I said, I was in the front office reading, um, some books that were on display. And one in particular affected me. I said, would you be open for me coming someday and reading that book, that story, it's not very long, to the students? Oh, right away, yeah. Just let us know, 12:40 and thereafter, we're available. Um, but there was that open communication, um, with not only a school board member, but just an interested member of the community. Um, I, I just am so much in need to have the community more aware of the good things that we're doing. I really, you know, I've been in this community for 47 years and been involved with the schools, with my own children, let alone the school nurse and so forth. And I see such a need for people to communicate in such a respectful, kind way that you can bring your problems forward without somebody clobbering you with their words, that there is good dialogue, good exchange, so that something does get resolved. Um, but I, I just, some of the schools that I've been in already, I see some of the people I knew for years back. Um, I have been impressed by what I have seen. I think there's more of an open communication. And I think the community needs to know that, that they are welcome.
I think, um, and I agree with you. I think, um, one of the things I've been really trying to do would be any invitation or any group, community group that wants to come in and to be able to visit with me. I am meeting with them. I met with like Lori's place today. I had the folks from the J-Tid want to come over and talk to me. Like, if somebody requests a meeting, I am meeting with them and putting them in contact with other people within our district. Um, people are, are seeking partnerships. Some of them are like, I've been trying to get in and I haven't been able to. And they're just seem to be really excited to come in. Um, but I think that there's a lot that we can, we can, both sides can be very mutually beneficial when we work together. So.
I have a follow-up question to that because that was something that I was thinking of as you went through the presentation. Um, we do know that there's many existing opportunities for parents in the community to be involved. I mean, all the different events we have, um, sponsorships and, um, uh, the CTE advisory, you know, there's, there's so many ways. I'm sort of curious, your thoughts on, like, are you seeing gaps? Is it just better communication of what we already have? Is it, um, how do we, not just add more stuff, you know what I mean? Like, how are you thinking about that and how can we be thoughtful about that?
So one of the things, um, actually, it's kind of laid out in the strategic plan, would be creating a baseline of like, what is our community involvement on surveys, on attending events, that sort of thing, and just keeping track on it. Because it's really hard to be able to say, well, like, this is so much better than it's ever been because we haven't ever tracked what is it? So that's what we're currently in the process of. That's actually one of the steps on the strategic plan is just to track a baseline so that we can show an improvement or where we're truly at, so we can identify those gaps. Um, but I've been just continually impressed when I went to the CTE advisory. I mean, there were parents, there were community members, um, local businesses, all were there just to share their ideas and to be supportive of our district. And people just show up. Um, you know, I, I talk with Cool FM quite frequently and they just, you know, they are celebrating lots of sponsors, but they celebrate our schools on a regular basis. So I just, I'm, I try to thank them. But, um, again, it's a baseline collection year. And so I have not identified a particular need as of yet. I would say something I know that Ms. Rockford has mentioned before. It's, I don't think it's that the parents aren't coming out. It's the, um, community. Other than community sponsors, businesses, no issue there at all. But it's the other people who just don't know what's going on. So like, I'm invited, I'm going on Monday to speak, um, to one of the organizations, and I don't want to say the wrong name, but one of the service organizations in town is absolutely fabulous. Um, I'll be speaking with them on Monday, just to be able to share some of the news. So I'm always welcome to go to events and to speak to different groups. I know my mom's church has asked me before to be able to speak. It didn't work out last time, but I'm willing to go and speak to different groups. So, because I'm very proud of our district.
You know, I also think there's a lot of older people in the community that would love to volunteer. They just don't know where. They don't know where the need is.
And you saw that, right, though? You saw that teacher that was there. She's been there. I mean, she taught at that school for 16 years. She's been long since retired and she's there volunteering. Really, all it takes, and you asked, what do they have to do? I said, they just need to show up. They just need to go to an office. They can email the principal. They can call the principal. They can show up, understanding that you're probably not going to get to go in just that very day. Because we do have to ensure, you know, fingerprint safety. All those sort of things are in place. But we can make that process so easy and a school can explain how to do that. But every one of our schools, there's volunteer opportunities available at all of them. So.
Any other questions, comments?
Um, does the comment, um, Terry, you're doing a lot and I thank you for it. And I hadn't had the opportunity to formally thank you for stepping up to the plate as the interim superintendent. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you. I appreciate it and I, I appreciate your, your trust.
Another question. Um, so as you move forward with all of these plans, uh, you know, one of the things was about unity and teamwork. And, um, we are a team and then we are a team with you and everyone else. Do, um, what can we do to best support you and your work? Like, what can we do to make things better and easier for you?
I think that's, I appreciate that question a lot because I do consider myself part of a team with you all. And, and each of you said in your own ways through the questions about how important it is for you all to be united, um, to feel safe to be able to share your concerns. Um, and so that's why I think, you know, like, when I offer those opportunities to be able to meet, to be able to kind of go over prior to a board meeting, to be able to kind of talk about those concerns, I'd rather that than a gotcha at a board meeting. You know, I'd rather be prepared and be able to have, uh, a thoughtful response for you because I feel like that's what, um, you deserve. It's what our community deserves when, you know, because these things are recorded and they stay there. And I want to be able to be thoughtful with how I respond. So, and I feel like, um, for the most part, I feel like that's what we have done, or you all have kind of chimed in and helped answer some questions sometimes as well, or given, uh, your feedback as a board. Um, but I think if we just, we kind of stay focused on why we're here. We're not here for any individual idea. We are here to do what's best for students. And that's how, when I, no matter what's gonna go on, as far as it's going to be for me to stand up and give you a recommendation to close schools that I love, that I truly love, it's gonna, it will break my heart, but I can lay my head down at night and I can sleep well because I know that I'm doing what's in the best interest of all children and staff in this district. And that's what we have to do if we want to be able to survive. And so I'm gonna do it, hard as it may be, but just to be supportive of one another. I need to be able to be supportive of you and the roles that you play. I know you're not making a lot of money, like none, to do these roles. I know it's a truly a volunteer. It is a service that you are doing to step forward. Um, and just to, the support you can give is just to continue to respect the education and the training and the experience that I have and to, to get to know me well enough to know my heart and know that I'm gonna do what's in the best interest of our families.
So I have one comment. Um, I really appreciate the after-action. Uh, that helps us tremendously. So when, you know, we get asked questions or better understanding what took place, kind of having a, a real grasp of what happened in the past. We got bits and pieces and we kind of had to put it all together and kind of fill in some of the gaps. So that's very helpful.
I will make sure that I continue to do those. Like, I know, like, with our situation that we had yesterday at Joyce Clark Middle School, you know, yes, we let you all know. Things, situations like that are so fluid and it is really hard for the community to understand and I understand as well, because I don't want them, how they find out about something being on Facebook. It's not how I want to find out about something about my child either, or something that's impacted my child either. But it's such a fluid situation. It's very hard. Uh, I respect the media. My daughter's a journalist for KOD, so I understand. They are listening to, they hear the police scanners. They know what's going on. And the police can respond like that. We can't do it. We're talking confidentiality of children. And they are, those people in the building are dealing with that, that situation. But we're doing an after-action on that, just so what could we do to ensure that information goes out faster? So I understand when people are upset about things and so, um, but we will do after-actions to say, how can we make them better? Even when I feel like the administration at JCMS did the right things yesterday. They got all the, they made sure that all the kids were safe. They ensured that the student who made, um, the, the threat was isolated, did not have a weapon, and the police were called. That's what I asked my principals to do. So I 100% support them. How do we communicate as a district to something that we can help support in those emergency situations? It was just sort of a little perfect storm. Our PIO was out. We were, you know, anyways, lots of things went into that. But we can get better and so we will use after-actions and so you'll be seeing more of those. I know we just had, we were thrilled in our special education department. We just closed out an OCR report from prior to Michelle starting. Office of Civil Rights complaint from, was it last school year? Last school year. Um, and so they closed that out. And that's a celebration. That means we met all the requirements to close out that OCR. But then I asked, um, Ms. Swanback, I said, and I sent her a form as an after-action. Like, that's great that we got through that, but how do we ensure that we don't ever get there again? Because she didn't live through that. She wasn't part of it. Ms. Rada closed that out. So she's gonna go through an after-action of what did we learn, what went well, what do we make sure happens? Because that's the only way we can get better. And I've always said, like, with our audits, I don't fear audits. I think that there are perfect opportunity for us to learn, um, and how to do things better. Uh, we, like, we attended several, um, sessions up at the law conference that we went to on how to do things better. And I learned so many different things, like things I could bring back and talk to people about and say, how can we fix this? So that'll become a commonplace item. Um, I'll try to, you know, sometimes I'll need to redact, like kiddo's names or things like that from them, but, but just so that you're aware that I do those on all situations.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. If nobody else has anything, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move the adjourn?
So moved.
All right.
No, I'm stuck yet, sorry.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four zero. Good night, everybody.